I'll rise. Lewis County Fiscal Court is now in session.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Jim Bob Williams to come forward. He's from the Pastor of New Life Fellowship Church here in Vanceburg, and I've asked him to come and pray for us today, and we appreciate you being here, Jim Bob.
Appreciate you having me. I invite our heavenly Father, Lord, as we come to you this afternoon, we want to thank you first and foremost, Father, for your grace bestowed upon us. We want to thank you for these elected officials that's here today, God, that have been in place, Lord, to help take care of the business. We ask, God, that you keep your hand upon them, Lord, and guide them in the way that you see fit, Father, that they'll make good choices, Lord, to help each one that they're representing today, Father. So, God, as we come into this meeting, once more, we ask your blessing upon us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim Bob. And County Attorney Ben Harrison, I'll ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Clerk Colwell.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Here. Okay, first thing on the agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting on August the 11th.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, a second from Johnny. Any further discussion? If not, Clerk Colwell.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
And then approval of minutes from the special meeting on August 26, 2025.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we got a motion for Mark, a second from Joey. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Welcome guests, and do we have any response from the public? Okay. We will move on then to, there is no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And first is the approval of Camp Dix Volunteer Fire Department contract modification, and that's in your packet. This is where Buffalo Trace got us some extra funding for that project, correct Penny?
Yes, that is correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the modified contract.
Second.
Okay, motion for Mark, second from Woody. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Okay, next is the ordinance number 25 dash zero four, Lewis County Fiscal Court Budget Amendment, FY 2026.
An ordinance relating to fiscal year 2526 annual budget amendment thereof, whereas the Lewis County Fiscal Court has realized unbudgeted receipts from the following funds, be it ordained by the Lewis County Fiscal Court of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, section one, the budget for fiscal year 2526 is amended to increase slash decrease the receipts of the following funds to include unbudgeted receipts from, A, CDBG Camp Dix Volunteer Fire Department, an amount of eighty-two thousand dollars, total amended revenue eighty-two thousand dollars. Section B, CDBG Camp Dix Volunteer Fire Department, eighty-two thousand dollars, total amended appropriations eighty-two thousand dollars. Section two, the amounts of adjusting the revenue accounts in section one are for governmental purposes.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, a second from Mark. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to express my appreciation to Buffalo Trace Area Development. I know they're not here, and getting these extra funds to really close the gap on that project.
Yes, I agree with you on that and appreciate that. They worked really hard to help us out to get that, so. Any further discussion? If not, Clerk Colwell.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Okay, next is approval of Kinnick Watershed Management Plan Contract.
Just one comment, as I was reviewing that, on page six, I know that they have provided a project status report template there, and it looks like it's been started for this project, however, the water body watershed identification mentions Licking River Basin. So Penny, I don't know if that's just a typo on their part.
Okay, I see that there.
Yeah, that can't be right, but, you know, maybe that's just a sample template.
Okay, I will get with Buffalo Trace on this one.
Yeah, Brian is the coordinator for Licking River Basin, so that's probably how that wound up getting on there. But anyway, that was really good. This is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar grant altogether. A hundred and thirteen thousand of it was for the watershed management plan, and then the seventy-five, about seventy-five thousand was from the grant program to match it. They did a lot of hard work on that grant, and that's gonna be a good thing for us. So, did we Colwell on that one?
Make the motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Woody and Mark, any further discussion? And Clerk Colwell.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, next is the resolution number 25 dash fourteen, Concord Trinity Road.
The resolution consolidating County Road 1363, Kentucky 3550, and County Road 1324, Concord Trinity Road. Whereas County Road 1363, Kentucky 3550 connects from Kentucky 3550 and is point five five six miles in length, and then becomes County Road 1324, Concord Trinity Road, that is one point nine four eight miles in length. And whereas County Road 1363 and County Road 1324 are essentially the same road, and whereas in order to remove an unnecessary county road designation from the county road inventory, the consolidation of County Road 1363 and County Road 1324 is practical and reasonable, and whereas no residences exist on County Road 1363, and therefore the consolidation of the two county roads will not impact the address of any residents. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the Lewis County Fiscal Court as follows, County Road 1363, Kentucky 3550, is hereby consolidated into County Road 1324, Concord Trinity Road. CR 1363 Concord Trinity Road shall now include all of former County Road 1363, Kentucky 3550. The county road inventory shall now reflect that County Road 1324 Concord Trinity Road connects with Kentucky 3550 and shall be two point five one miles in length.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2025 resolution dash fourteen resolution, binding the two roads together.
Okay, we got a motion from Johnny.
Second.
Second from Woody. Any further discussion? And Clerk Colwell.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Okay, next is surplus vehicles and equipment for Lewis County Road Department, and the list is in your packet there. I think there's two dump trucks, a Jeep, a Baco, and a Caterpillar loader.
Make a motion to approve the surplus property.
Okay, we got a motion from Mark.
I'll second.
Second from Joey. Any further discussion?
Do we have tag numbers for those other items yet?
What other items?
It mentions a Baco Super M series and a Cat loader.
Yeah, we've got the VIN numbers on there.
Yeah, I just didn't know, do they have an assigned, do they have a number as well as the other numbers there? The other items all have an assigned tag number. It don't matter to me, I just was curious if they have it or not.
We don't have an assigned tag on them vehicles, on that loader.
Yeah, I just, I think it might just be maybe.
I'd say it's our inventory number that she keeps track out there. I would say that's what that assigned number is.
It don't matter to me, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I see what you mean, Wendy.
We have to keep that inventory tag. I'm not sure why they don't have one, but.
They probably just need some type of tag number, I would assume.
Yeah, okay.
You probably rusted off that loader.
Fair.
Okay, yeah, I can, we can check on that.
But motion still stands, I think.
Okay, so we got a motion from Mark and a second from Joey. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Next is Luke Bentley Jr., reappointment to the Garrison Quincy Kentucky O Heights Water District, a four-year term to expire, twelve thirty-one of 2029.
Yes, make the motion.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, a second from Johnny. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Next is higher Wayland Salvia.
Salvia.
Salvia, part-time at Lewis County Road Department, pay rate twelve dollars per hour.
Make the motion.
Okay, a motion from Woody, a second from Joey. Okay, any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Okay, next is apply for a KCO insurance grant. We have never applied for one of these before, but we're eligible to, as the ambulance service is eligible to apply for the KCO grant. Last year, Greenup County got it, and I hope this year Lewis County gets it. But anyway, we can also apply, and what our plan was, I talked to Morgan about us applying for a grant, maybe about up to fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, to put some non-slip paint on all the steps in the courthouse and put a handrail on the side of the wall. And maybe possibly put another little light on each area to make it a little brighter on the steps. And also to paint the break room floor at the road department in non-skid paint, like that epoxy paint that has like little sand in it or something. And so that's what we were thinking, and it might be up to two thousand, and we would have to pay, if we spend two thousand, we would have to pay four hundred. It's a twenty percent match, and our people could do the work.
I'd like to make a motion to approve applying for the grant.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion for Mark and a second from Woody. Any further discussion? Okay.
Sorry, Judge.
No, that's okay.
I'm just asking a question that you all go on.
No problem, you can Colwell for the KCO grant.
Okay. Mark made the motion, and Woody, okay.
Yeah.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann. Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, next, I got a call from the fire chief Kyle Carpenter asking if we would donate five hundred dollars to the Buffalo Trace Fire School coming up in October seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, I believe. I think we did this last year. All of our volunteer fire departments are invited to go. The food and the training is all free for all of them.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion from Woody, a second from Joey. Any further discussion? Okay, Clerk Colwell.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yeah, thank you. And before we go into the monthly reports, I wanted to just say that I'm proud of Eldon Rife. He got inducted, and Morgan did the application and submitted it, and he was approved to be inducted into the Kentucky Veterans Hall of Fame for his many, many years, I think twenty-seven or twenty-eight in the Army, and seventeen for the Lewis County School Systems as JROTC instructor, and ten years for the Lewis County Sheriff's Department. So he's a very special man for Lewis County, and I'm tickled that he got inducted into that. They had a great ceremony, and several of us went up Saturday to Lexington to see him, he gets sworn in, so. If you see him, congratulate him and thank him, so. Next, we'll move to our Lewis County Sheriff's Department report. Sheriff's not here today, and we're proud of him too, because this week he's gonna be sworn in as the president of the Kentucky Sheriff's Association. Is that right, Ben?
I think that's right, barring any unforeseen circumstances. That's the plan.
Okay. Well, he's gonna be a great representative for them, and I'm proud of him and the hard work he does in Lewis County. Next is our Lewis County Treasurers Report.
I submit the report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Okay, any questions for Penny? If not, then Lewis County Road Supervisor David Goodwin. Did we need?
Penny, did you need a motion?
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers Report.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. So we got a motion for Mark, a second from Johnny. Any further discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Okay, Lewis County Animal Control, she's got a report in there. Did you all have any questions for David?
It looks like they've been busy. Lot of roads listed on this report. Good time of the year to get a lot done. They've been hard at it.
You got anything, David? New loader working well?
Yes.
Okay, it's a nice piece of equipment, and seeing he had it backed into the shed out there, make sure it didn't get any dust on it or any rain on it, so. So.
It ain't in the salt shed, is it?
So thanks for taking good care of that, and I'm sure he will. Next is our Lewis County Emergency Management Director. I don't think Dennis's report is in there. He got called out, and as you know, he's on a call today over on three forty-four, so he'll probably be tied up there for a while. Next, Lewis County Solid Waste Coordinator Roger Lewis. I know Roger, he's been very busy, and if you have any questions for him. So he has a big week coming up, starting Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right? And we got, what, this solid, the tire amnesty? We're expecting a lot of tires.
This is just tires this weekend?
Yes, this is just a tire thing.
Have you got a limit on how many people can bring, or no limit?
Roger, do you accept them if they're on wheels? If they're on wheels?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So he already probably got a few semi-loads committed, don't you? So it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a big, busy.
I hate seeing him in the cream.
Few days for him. He's been doing a lot of other work also on our parks and stuff, trying to help us get some benches, picnic tables, and stuff like that in. So next, our nine one one report should be in there, if you have any questions about it. And then we have Brenda Cunningham, welcome, who's with the ambulance service, and she's.
I'm fielding for Michael today. He's out in training. I know you gotta keep those certifications up. It's both him and several of our other employees around and about with that.
All right.
Thanks, Brenda.
So, and John, we have two full-time crews, two trucks on duty, but although we had those, we had eight rollovers to other agencies in the month of August, which is really out of control, because you know how it goes, you got two trucks out, you gotta call from help, but all of those counties and all of those agencies really help us a lot. So we had a hundred and fifty-eight dispatch calls, we did a hundred and sixty-two run forms, we transported a hundred and six, seventy-seven of those was SOMC, six was St. Sager, one to UK, KDMC, Metamucil, about twenty-two, Fleming County didn't get any, and we also did three to the landing scene. So we had thirty-nine refusals, and that's out of our control too, you know, if they're going out and they call somebody's falling or something, they call us. So those are mainly refusals for falls and that type of thing. We transferred three to flight. I'm not sure what all he tells you. The four scene, tens of four scene, we had nine tens before they got to the scene, and we did a couple of walk-ins at the station and so forth. Something we're proud about on the second page is our times. As you can see, our shoot time is one point twenty-eight, and thirty-one percent of those were less than forty-five minutes, so we're out the door in less than a minute and a half. And the response time is eleven forty-eight, forty-eight percent of those are eight minutes. But that also depends on, and average scene time was seventeen oh eight, forty percent of those was low twenty minutes. Of course, you know, the scene time depends where it's at, around three seventy-seven or lower or so forth. Average, just turn around at the hospital, is seventeen point fifty-one minutes. Sixty-five percent of those are, of course, are less than eighteen. Average total call time, you can see there, but eighteen percent of the patients encounter less than thirty minutes. Total mileage, two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven point seven. We drove a lot of miles, it looks like, and drove nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-plus miles. And you see, we have three, what we call three shifts, and they're pretty evenly shifts. One did fifty-three, and one did fifty-three, and one did fifty-six. So the type of calls are listed there as twelve, the falls with injuries eighteen, chest pain sixteen, respiratory thirteen, and we run down, but runs by district. The Vanceburg district had fifty-six, Tulsa Pearl had twenty, Baco had ten, Harburg had three, Lewis County district had thirty-five, Camp Dix nine, Garrison twenty-three, did not do any out of the county. Of course, fifty-six for Vanceburg, seventeen of those went to Vanceburg Hills, where we do the nursing homes well. SOMC transported seven falls and primary falls plus, asked us to transfer four. And we're also working on, at our tonight's meeting, our board meeting tonight, we are going to hopefully approve our twenty-four audit, since we were only in thirty-one days in business in twenty-four, but they may just go back and do an audit for that year, so we're gonna, that's gonna be presented tonight by our auditor, and then we'll have the twenty-five audit soon. The audit works as a year behind, so the twenty-four audit doesn't have to be done until September fourteenth of two thousand this year, and the twenty-five audit next September. But we're gonna go ahead and do the twenty-five audit and get it out of the way as well.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Good report, and thank you for all your work on the ambulance service.
You're certainly welcome.
We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Is that, how, how's the twenty-five audit being able to be done ahead of time?
Well, actually, our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, so it goes from July first to twenty-four to June thirtieth to twenty-five. So we can go ahead.
I got you.
Although it's not due till September of next year, we can go ahead and do that.
There's this fiscal year just like ours, it's a calendar year.
It's a lot easier to.
Do it while it's fresh, yeah.
Going back to the twenty-three, twenty-four audit, you know.
Yeah, this upcoming one is gonna be FY twenty-six, we're at FY twenty-six. I got you, yeah, that makes sense, that's good, that's a good idea, that's a good thought.
We have an auditor for Craft Noble.
Yeah.
And I've worked with him many years, and he was very gracious to go ahead and take this on and get it done in time. So we presume that to be in here hopefully tomorrow, and you'll get assist support, and we'll be fully combined.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Brenda, we appreciate you.
Good job.
Sierra, did you wanna talk to us about anything today? Okay, welcome, Sierra O'Call from Buffalo Trace.
I was here for the Camp Dix project. I did ask about the Montgomery Kenny Connect question. I don't have a response yet, but I can get back with you all on that. As far as the grant agreement for the Camp Dix project, it was amended because we needed additional funds in order to cover our bid overage. Were there any questions on that?
You missed this earlier, but I expressed my appreciation for finding some additional funds for that project, so. Really appreciate you all finding that, that helped close the gap, so that'd be great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We also went and did that budget amendment as well, and then once we get the second reading.
Wonderful.
So, thank you very much on your work on the Camp Dix Fire Department. You all have done a lot of tremendous amount of work over there, and we're excited to see that project finally get underway.
Absolutely.
We've had a lot of bumps in the road there, but it's gonna be great for that community, for our county as well.
Absolutely.
And while you're here, would you wanna say anything about the email and the CED thing?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. So our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan is rewritten every five years. So it was rewritten in twenty-twenty, however, we do update it annually in order to make sure that all the information in there is factual and relevant. So it is gonna be open for a thirty-day comment period, and that window opened on Friday, September the fifth, so it will close on Sunday, October the fifth at eleven fifty-nine PM. We are encouraging the public to take a look at it and to submit their comments to us via a written form online. And so if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to do so, but if you could just share that with your communities, we would really appreciate it.
I was looking over that a little bit today, and I was, I saw, I think on page twenty-one where they were talking about the farmer's market on there as an agri. I'm not an agri business, but agri-related.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if a place like Kangaroo Ridge Farm might fit into that, or like Four C Farm that's out in the Tulsa Spurle area out toward Concord, which is, you know, it's a big farm, but it's a venue as well. So that was kinda on my mind.
Okay, yeah.
Why I had it on my mind, I was just gonna go ahead and ask you.
Yeah, no, I think those are great suggestions, and, you know, as time passes, like some of the, some of the groups and organizations that we started with in twenty-twenty-two are no longer operating, but there are some additional ones that need to be added. So those could definitely be two that we should look at inserting in that area. So I'll take a look at it, and I'll get back with you, but yeah, those sound like a couple that we need to add.
Okay. Okay, any more questions for Sierra? We appreciate you coming today and all your work for Lewis County.
Appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll share with you that Brian Storrs from the Division of Water, and Tracy Miller from University of Kentucky Landscape and Design, she brought her class here the other day to Lewis County in Vansburg, and looked at several projects in the county, and thirty, about thirty students, and they was really excited. They looked at all of our projects, and they was, they're gonna, you know, tell us what they think, and they're gonna come back one day, so we'll make sure that anybody in the community or you guys all wanna come and hear what they, their thoughts are on some of the things they looked at, such as, you know, like Kenny Connect being a Blue Water Trail and kayaking opportunities there. But they looked at several things, and they're going to share their thoughts with us, so can't wait to hear what they come up with. I talked to Ben this morning about nine-eleven service on Thursday morning, about eight, I think it's about eight forty-two or eight forty-six. We'll do a little short service out on the front porch of the courthouse, and everybody's welcome to come. And I wanted also to let you all know we're gonna have a health fair and a career fair at the elementary school on October the ninth. The school's out that weekend, Woody, you're all on fall break.
I do think it falls that, that week. It's usually the first Friday, but I think, yeah, it's out.
So anyway, on the, on the health side of it, Primary Plus and Metaview are partnering, and they're gonna offer probably eight hundred to a thousand dollars worth of tests for thirty dollars. I mean, it's a no-brainer, especially for somebody that don't have health insurance, and we wanna get our people out there for that. It's gonna be like eight to one o'clock, and during that time, the career fair with Tin Co. and Buffalo Trace Workforce Development, they're gonna be set up. We'll probably have a lot of businesses there. So if you know anybody that's looking for a job, encourage them to come out, and they can get a good deal on some health tests and maybe find a job if they're looking for one, or if they know somebody is.
What was the date on that again, Judge?
It's gonna be October the ninth at eight o'clock till one in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Approval of claims for all county funds as presented to the fiscal court.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Okay, we got a motion from Woody, and.
I'll second that.
A second from Mark, any further discussion? Clerk Carroll.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Next, approval of transfers for all county funds and presented to the fiscal court.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion from Mark, second from Woody, any further discussion? Clerk Carroll.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes, sorry.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Okay, anybody have anything else that we need to bring up? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Woody and Joey, and any further discussion? If not, Clerk Carroll.
Judge Sparks.
Yes.
Joey McCann.
Yes.
Woody Underwood.
Yes.
Mark Horsley.
Yes.
Johnny Osburn.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned, and next fiscal court meeting will be held October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five at three o'clock.